All right, let's get started. Let's bring the Wednesday, June 12th, 2019, Dune City Council meeting to order. Maybe I'll roll call, please.
Mayor Forsyth.
Here.
Council President Sheldon Meyer.
President.
Councilor Susan Snow here. Councilor Duke Wells.
Here.
Councilor Robert Dorff.
Here.
And Councilor Montgomery is expected to attend.
Aren't we all?
And then Councilor Town is absent and excused.
Oh, okay, excellent. Would you all please join me in the closing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda. So moved. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done, it's approved. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
With amended.
With the amended, you have the amended bills.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done, consent agenda is passed. Announcements, Jamie?
For the record, Council Montgomery is here. The Planning Commission will hold public hearings on a conditional use permit and a variance on Thursday, June 27th, that's 6:00 PM. Dune City is looking for Budget Committee members to help keep Dune City's spending on track. Please contact City Hall for an application and no prior experience is necessary. Dune City is also looking for someone to fill one Planning Commission vacancy. Again, please contact City Hall for an application, no experience is necessary. The Planning Commission also serves as the CAC and between the two, meets twice monthly.
Thank you. Do we have any citizen input for items that are not on the agenda?
Yes, we do.
Excellent. Thank you. Bob Pine, for Florence.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Forsyth, City Council members, city staff, honored guests. My name is Bob Pine. I'm here representing the Central Oregon Coast Amateur Radio Club. This is a group of 96 people in the Dune City Florence-Macon area and we're the ones who provided 23 volunteers for your Dune City Triathlon just this last weekend. And we're delighted to do it and have a lot of fun. The reason I'm here is to invite you again to our annual Field Day exercise, which is going to occur not this coming weekend, but the weekend after, Saturday, June 22nd. Field Day itself starts at 11 o'clock on Saturday and goes continuously around 1:00 to 11:00 on Sunday. Drop in anytime during that period. What we'll be showing you is we will be out at Southern Campground, two miles north of Florence, in Camp Site C. We'll have set up in what was vacant what before we got there, a complete communication setup on emergency power with food, as we would do in the event of a disaster where your communications, where your internet, your cellphone, your phones are all down. This is what we would do in order to get communication out for you. We'd like to show you how we do it, what we do, and we would appreciate you coming out to take a look, find out before the disaster gets what it is we are going to be able to do for you. If you come out sometime between, say, 4:30 and 5:00 on Saturday, there will be a delicious potluck barbecue. You're more than welcome to join us, talk to the people, your constituents, and have a good time in the sun at Field Day. That's it, it's just the invitation, come on out, take a look, see what we do. Thank you, Bob, appreciate it.
I have a question.
Yes.
Later on in our agenda, we're talking about emergency procedures and those kinds of things, and tsunamis and wildfires and a whole bunch of other disasters. And one of the things that I was most impressed with on television in the last couple of weeks is where the United States Navy landed at either Telemac or somewhere up on the North Coast, launched their hovercrafts, and those hovercrafts were such a size that they could carry tanks or trucks or all those kinds of things, to see if we needed to have that sort of expertise, given that we had a disaster. Would you be in touch with them?
We function under the Westland Emergency Operations Group, which is your intergovernmental agency of which Dune City is part. What's the actual title, a council member?
Right, well, we're cooperative members. But I will let you know that we are currently in communication with the Lane County Emergency Officer, the New Hope, and the US Navy, we're working on that even as we speak. There was an email sent out again today, all the Dune Cities, including City of Florence, were invited to provide a map or sites that they felt would be the best sites in the event of emergency for transporting and getting the equipment in. I provided some as well and working with Coast Guard also. So, we're working on that right now and then the next step beyond that is, becomes, we look at it, okay, they say here is the best one for them, now we work on how we're going to get there and get things, it's, it's a process.
And we would be under the direction of the incident commander from the Westland Emergency Operations Group, providing communications. We are working on, quite frankly, a replacement even for Wi-Fi. We now have the fire department connected to the Justice Center through a Wi-Fi link that can be used by people at the police department and at the fire station, using a regular laptop computer, using a regular browser, send email, we have voice over IP capacity, and we're working, it takes money to do this, but we're working on extending it down here and connecting the Dune City Hall to part of that network. So all you have to do is just pick up the phone and we've replaced your phone system until the phones come back.
All right. I really appreciate what you're doing and I just wanted to kind of loop that if that makes sense. I was so impressed with that report that I kept, you know, we were isolated here without bridges and all those kinds of things, but we're still not without help.
Correct. We can get you and your communications out, but then we return back for supplies to the days before the bridges were in, where supplies were floated in by boat.
Yeah.
That's how they used to stock the White House, for example.
Yeah, right.
So, all of that, you know, there are systems in place, we will provide your communications with the outside world, including communications after the crush of the disaster is over, the what are called health and welfare communications, where we can send emails from anyone in this area to relatives outside the disaster area saying, "Hey Mom, I'm okay, I'll call you when the phone lines are reinstalled."
As an example, and I haven't talked to Bob about it, but the person that I'm dealing with in Nevada asked me to get some information from him. But I have a friend who is a ham operator in Nevada who covers a big area and he has instructions that in the event there's something here to try and get ahold of the ham people here, and he has instructions and knows how to contact my daughter in Florida so that she can contact the family members. That is our communication, like let everybody know what's going on. Everyone should have a plan like that.
Our communications link allow us to send out even emails and text messages to people who have functioning internet or a functioning phone system. I mean, the internet's not going down everywhere if Cascadian ruptures. So somewhere out there, it will be still intact. We can send text messages to anyone who's in the area that is still functioning. We can send emails directly to someone that they would pick up on their normal computer, just average, ordinary, every day because they're not in the disaster. We also can get communications from those areas back into this area via radio. We'll be demonstrating that on Saturday, the 22nd, and Sunday morning, the 23rd. Come on out, see it, we'll even send messages on your behalf, anyone you choose. Bring an email address, bring a telephone number.
Excellent.
Thank you, Bob, appreciate it.
Presentations.
We have with us Mr. Gary Franklin, HD Fowler Company. Caesar was unable to make it today. This is from the other company, we received a bid from, it should be, did he hand it around? It should have been in your bag, but I was waiting for a change, got it last minute, he never got the copy made, so I'm glad he brought something for everybody.
Okay, let me introduce myself, I'm Gary Franklin with HD Fowler. HD Fowler Company is, came into Eugene 15 years ago, they're based out of Milton, Washington, and they're a full-on water burst distribution center. One of the things, I might explain, I am not the meter expert, my guy's got, he's got medical issues, so I wasn't able to get him out here, but he is my phone, I can answer any questions within my phone, we have to, but so bear with me as I'm not the expert, but I have been in this business a long time and I have been involved in some meter systems that I have sold in the past. So, like I say, the big thing with meter systems, I'll tell you, especially if you go read, is that you need to have the support, support them because they don't always work all the time, so you need to have the support. So, that's one of the things that, me as a salesman, area salesman in this area, I make my living basically off service and supporting different systems and different stuff. So, I just want to say that because it's an important part of it, is the service. So, what I'd like to do is just go over this quote that we got and match up with your folders here. The first thing is this Harmony software, it's basically a billing software that Master Meter uses. They don't only do Master Meter, they do all AMR, so it's set up for most all meter reading, that's the first phase there. This is the area that I'm not an expert in, this is one of the ones that if we have questions on billing software, I'd have to get Ted, Carl, to get back with this, which you could, it's just that this time, so, and I know you guys want to move along, so we're trying to push things along for you, best we can. So, but anyway, the billing software does a lot of different stuff, obviously, some of this is for fixed base, which would be just a tower system or whatever, where you have your laptop in your office and you basically just did it all from there. In your case, we're going to be doing a drive-by laptop, driving by and reading meters that way. So some of this is not relevant to your case. Moving along to the software, like I say, it's, this software's set up for all meter reading, it's not just designed for just Master Meter, it will read basically all the different meters out there. My Water Advisor, that's just, if you want to access meters by phone, that's just an option to do that. So you could actually, the homeowner could actually read his water meter by, with his phone, if that's the kind of stuff you'd like to do. So I'm going to move to the, the drive-by system, if you go to that Master Meter, 3G mobile, this is the, we'll go to the quote now, this is the first item, mine item there, so laptop system, basically it comes in a hard case, it is the, the laptop has all the points connected to, for all the meter reading. Basically, this is what you put in your vehicle and you drive, drive, once you fire this up, it'll start sending pulses out, RF signals out, and you would be, you'd wake up the meters. And so, all your meter points, you would be, they would be every 10 seconds pulsating to pick us up. And then you could pick them up somewhere from 200 feet to 1,000 feet, depending on, you know, the instructions a little. One of the questions that came up is that if it's under the house, will it read under the house? Most cases it will, but if it doesn't, there's what we call an AC link that we can actually move that register outside of the house, you know, if it's obstructed or whatever, so we can do that. This, basically, this is, like I say, this is the laptop, this is the 13,000, the first item there, and it's basically the brains of the system. The next page is the register that we, we have for our, it's got the encoder in it and has the battery in it, and this is the brains of the meters, I'll step down here. Basically, Harmony has no, no wires on that, everything's in the register. So, it's in a glass case.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, it looks like, but it's all electronic, it's got a 20-year battery life on it. And basically, the nice thing I say, like I say, is to just put it in, plug in, it doesn't have any extra wires, because I did sold systems in the past where they had wires and gel caps, and that was a real problem in many areas. So, that's, that's a good system, that's the 3G that we're going for. So, that's the, and then, okay, then go back to the, the next, my item on the quote there is the train, Harmony sends out, Master Meter will send out a person for two days, one day for the office and one day for the field, and helps to get up and running the system. The next item is, is a, that is for the software, and it's a yearly cost of $1,200. The first year goes to us, the second year goes right to Master Meter, any building there out the back. So it's like a $1,200 cost to use their system, the software. 995 there is the, the meter itself, that's what I'm just showing you guys, that is the, pretty much the, the brains of the meter, is the rest of it. Then, we also added down below, there were some questions whether somebody wanted a 1-inch meter or whatever, so we had an extra cost there to show that. We're using, the meter there is a multi-jat meter, if you can, you turn a few pages there, it shows, it's, there's two different types, a multi-jat and a positive displacement. This one here just rotates, the other one's a cup, a cup out, they're very accurate meter, one, I guess, 100 gallons, I think it is, in one minute, so it'll read my gallon to the 100 gallons. Let's see, then the, with the warranty on this, the meters, they got a 10-year warranty on the meter and then they have an extra 10-year coverage, and that's pretty standard in the industry, I hope your offering is doing that. Let's see, what else? That brings the warranty. No, this is fast, you guys can ask any questions you want. If I can't answer them, I'm sure you write them down, give it to Ted, and we can get back to you via email or, or we can actually call. No, they're pretty fast.
Who are you doing business with tomorrow?
Right now, we're doing business, we actually got, what is it, the West Coast?
South Coast.
South, South Coast.
Oh.
Yeah. He's had, he has 93, 93 meters, and I talked to him today, actually, because I didn't sell the system, he's a customer of ours, but he's another salesman, and I said, "Well Randy, how many are reading?" Because I was always concerned. And he goes, "All but one." And there's actually one I'm working on right now, so not, it's an OAK, 2-inch, and I've been there three or four times, we're trying to get it fixed, it's a bad module, but 93 of them aren't, except for the one I'm working on right now. So, that's pretty good, I thought, and all the interest. And then we have, basically, I had my meter guy tell me up to, Moreton, I know is one, has a system, he just touched me here today, so maybe just, see if I can find that big guy's. Turner is one, Independence, Colbert, Iwata, Calumet, Kitzitah, and then there's, he says Young Rivers, Lewis and Clark, Soon, and then Moreton, Long Beach, Washuwo, and White Sand, are some of the ones that, and we can get you guys, I was saying, if you wanted to talk to somebody or whatever, that would be something we could do too, we could connect you.
Okay.
Somebody?
What other questions we have here? Can a, can a, a customer with his own browser read those meters? Specialized?
Well, I believe you, with this only, I'm sorry.
If I bought the meter, could I read through my wireless computer online, or their frequency that can't get to?
I think it's, you'd have to do the frequency.
They actually have a, you can see, they actually have a, a ping right on the face.
Oh, can it, to read itself, yeah.
Yeah, but not electronic.
Not usually electronic, right.
So I used to put in the two gear version wireless systems, do you have much problem with interference with third-party or old wireless systems that are in?
I could, I could find that out for you.
No, it's all right.
I know it is a concern, though.
I had asked if there would be a problem with South Coast having theirs, if I'm driving around, would I be picking up South Coast meters? And I was told that we are each giving our own frequency.
I would think so. Yeah.
Well, and each meter would have to have their own ID also, if they do so, you shouldn't hit for that house, so, that's probably a red flag too.
The only problem I ever had is the old, old phones that they used to have, and if they got too close to the transmitter, it'd drop it. And that wouldn't happen too much because somebody is going to be on the ground somewhere and only be somebody else, something else was that close. Do you prefer 3/4 inch or 1-inch meters, not just for the money, but first for the flow rates?
Well, what I see, 3/4 or 5 inches is still the standard out there, but I have seen larger homes where there, we're seeing some of the bigger subdivision, larger homes, they're going to want in service, it's just because of the demand and the sprinkler system and whatever, especially in the city. So, we, but we're still seeing a lot more 3/4, we don't do a lot of 1-inch.
We had that conversation, was it on the meter size?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, if you're running, because, you know, if you run a large lot, you got an energy system, 1-inch might be, maybe you might go.
As you recall, we had discussed, trying to figure out why there's such a divergence between the two, and so now this quote is far better at identifying this, and as far as I can tell, the big difference is that the other quote actually included that radio booster thing, and it's not Wi-Fi, it was actually radio, so it's two different.
Two different things. All right. Any, anybody?
No.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Very good.
So Jamie, could you do a comparison for us? We don't have it here.
No, I know you don't. I know I have it, but I couldn't.
Would you put a comparison sheet together for us and get it out to us?
I will certainly do that, and let you can...
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you, Gary.
And then that way, we should be able to resolve this quickly. Thank you, appreciate it.
I would also like to give you a plan at the same time.
Yeah, exactly.
On how to proceed.
Yeah.
Because it's not like we're going to go plunk all the money down for the whole thing.
Okay, we'll make it. All right, so now we're going to do a public hearing.
And you can wing it now, you've done it enough, you've got it committed to memory.
See. So we'll close our round of reading at 6:25 and same time, we'll open a public hearing for resolution, about same time, yeah, resolution series 2019, number four, adopted by the fiscal year 2019, 2020. Hearing is now over. Deliberation.
Same time for the record, you're opening the hearing?
I did.
Oh, okay, good, I'm sorry, I missed it, I was reading, and ask if there's anybody who wants to make comments. Terminal.
The news media's here, you guys got any questions?
I'm serious, say hi.
All right, there's no public input to it. So we, we don't want to close the deliberation, we want to do deliberation first if there's any issues.
No, 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 you close the public hearing and then do deliberation. I know, I didn't give you a script, I'm sorry.
Well, I don't need the script, I just need it separated, okay, there we go. All right, so we're closing, one minute later, at 6:26. All right, folks, we spent some time with this, with this budget committee, do we have a motion to accept this resolution?
I move to accept the resolution.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any, any further discussion on what we've done over the last few weeks, vegetarian-wise? All right, there is no, there is no questions, all those in favor of approving the number four budget for 2019, 2020? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done, that's been approved. Thank you, and thank you for the Budget Committee and all the work that Stat has done, and Rory, you're the committee member, or the public here, thank you very much for all of your input during that period, and hopefully, as we go through this, we'll continue to get better at putting it together and hopefully you'll stay on this and work with us for that. Thank you very much. New business. Resolution 2019, number five, approving version 5.0, annex three, city of Dune, city of the Lane County, multi-jurisdiction hazard mitigation plan. How do you put that on a business card?
Okay, since, I'm guessing about 2009, the city of Dune City had been working with FEMA and with Lane County regarding the annex for the hazard mitigation. As you'll recall, we went through an exercise with WILOG, completely rewriting and redoing the emergency operations plan. That took a number of years, I want to say three, three to four years, anyway, to get that completed. And each of the other little communities, well, each community had its own, has its own annex to the overall emergency operations plan for Westland Emergency Operations Group and to Lane County.
And to Lane County, it's kind of like everything else, you go up the chain and come down. So Lane County has a mitigation plan, they hired a guy to work with us on it. We met with him for many, many years. And then we never heard from him again. And it turns out that it was, the prior emergency person was somewhat overwhelmed. We never actually got to review any of the documents. And when patients came in, that's the new emergency management person. Winningham Melcher, patients Winningham Melcher. She sent it into FEMA because it was, that was the next thing on her to-do list. Because if you don't do it by a certain time, and we have an emergency, and you cities haven't adopted it, then we don't get paid, we don't get help. So she sent it in, not knowing that we hadn't all done corrections to it yet. So yes, it has errors in it. But she said, let's go ahead and get it approved now. And then we'll make a note of those corrections to be made in the future, and we'll fix it then. But for now, we need to get on the record that we don't get covered in the event something happens. So, that's why this is before you this evening. This is the sort of thing that is common for city managers and city administrators to do, is to write up stuff like this. And as hindsight, I'd write it differently. Because I was a counselor when I worked on this. Now I'm a city administrator, totally different ballgame.
All right, do we need to read this by title only?
Well, it's a resolution.
It's a resolution.
Resolutions don't normally require public hearings or anything like that, unless they're the budget. Which is why you add a public hearing.
Well, I expressed my pleasure with hearing about how we're going to utilize all necessary included USAID information. I move that we approve resolution series 2019, number five.
Second. Any further discussion on this resolution? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it's approved. And we have resolution series 2019, number six, approving submission of small cities allotment grant for work on Parkway Drive.
I would like to submit an application. Parkway Drive needs a lot of work, but we thought we would start at the top where it meets Boy Scout Road. There have been six accidents at that intersection in the last couple of years. It's a blind corner. And so what we would like to do is kind of go in, we have the right and the room to do it. Go in and widen that area and try to straighten that corner so that you can have more of a vision clearance and not smack into each other. So that's the only section we're looking at doing right now. And it would be like between Buckskin Farm and Boy Scout Road, where that corner comes around and you can't see anything until you're out in the middle of the road.
That sounds like a wise thing to do. I move that we approve resolution number 2019, number six.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Resolution 2019, number six is going to be approved. Report of the actions taken by each other's spectrum over the last fiscal year.
Did you guys get the reporting there?
No, it jumps to number seven.
Oh, does it, yeah. Should be under, I don't know what happened to it. Because I don't have it in here anymore, which means I put it down.
I had there seven, but I heard it was spectrum.
No, no, this would be a regular report, it's only a one-pager.
Last page.
I do.
Is it on the last?
You have it, where did you find it, here? It is, fifth page back after the seven, the seven resolution. It's after the agreement. Okay, yeah, there it is, all right. Okay, during fiscal year 2018, 2019, I received notice from Charter that they were going to raise the monthly prices effective November 1st. Basically, it was from 8.85 to 9.95. And the receiver from 6.99 to $7.50 per receiver. And then Latino view from 7.99 to 8.95. November 22nd, they discontinued channel 107, which was Nick 2, at the request of Viacom. December 14th, they added the pop channel on 84 SD and 740 HD. On January 30th, they made the pop channel part of the gold level service. On January 2nd, they discontinued video on demand for WG in America. Channels SD 10 and HD 787. And then on January 11th, they reinstated the DPG in American channels. Effective February 14th, they discontinued, continued cable card and TiVo devices from viewing without attaching a tuner adapter, and then provided those tuner adapters for free. Effective February 24th, 2019, they raised the broadcast TV surcharge from 9.95 to 11.95. Effective April 30th, they launched a fitness channel, availability by subscription for 6.99 a month. And due to a corporate reorganization, Pacific Cable West took over operations of the cable system in Dune City. On May 13th, 2019, they launched a new Spectrum Originals On-Demand Channel, 2010. Effective May 24th, they discontinued Hillsong Channel, SD 172, and Hillsong Channel, HD 715. Effective 23, June 23rd, 2019, Charter will no longer provide a pro-rated credit for services sold on a monthly basis that are canceled prior to the end of the current billing month. Customers will be responsible for the full monthly charge for those services that are offered on a monthly subscription basis to which the customer has subscribed, regardless of the customer's termination of such monthly service prior to the conclusion of the respective subscription month. And that's just last year, and I've already gotten three this year.
Are you sure they're not a governmental agency?
Well, you can certainly tell when they start negotiating for the new year.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, resolution, all right, unless anybody has any questions for Jamie. All right, we'll move on to resolution series 2019, number seven, approving entry into the, into an IGA with Lane Council of Governance for Information Technology Services. Jamie?
In the packet, you'll find a copy of the proposed agreement for services. For those who don't know, the office has been struggling since before 9/11 with our email, among other things. And we have had everybody we can possibly think of come out and work on it to try and fix it. I finally made a decision to switch over. A lot of it, I felt, might have been because some of us were still using Windows 7. And some of us had Windows 10 and all this kind of thing. So we switched over to Windows 365 because that is what is recommended for cities and by Elco. So we switched to that, but in that process, we ended up losing a lot of things. And when I say that, I don't mean it's gone, because it's there. It's there in the computer somewhere. We just can't find it. We don't know where, and of course, we always have it on backup anyway. So if we have to get to it, we know where it is, but, and my email's working now, yay! But admin is not. Admin, administrative, the administrative assistant position computer will not work. And we don't know why. I finally had, I finally found out what was going on with mine. My computer, I would come in and turn my computer on, and the first thing it would do is start sending live emails. I'd go to my, I mean, I just got here. I'd go to my Outlook, and there's nothing in the Outlook. There's nothing to delete, there's nothing to stop. And when you cancel the task, it doesn't cancel, it just keeps going and going. So it's slowing everything down tremendously. And that was the problem I was having. And couldn't email other people out because my time, my computer time is being used on doing these things that I didn't know how to stop. Well, I finally called Elco and said, please, just send somebody over and see if we can at least get this much done. So Shu came over, and he did, he fixed that, and so my email is now fixed. He then spent several hours on the administrative assistant computer trying to figure out what the deal is, and we haven't been able to do it. So he is going to be taking on Charter to see if he can find out what's going on. He firmly believes it's a Charter issue. I've been on the phone so many times with Charter and Outlook, then they both point fingers at each other.
Sure.
But he has the brain knowledge and the communication ability to tell people what's going on so that perhaps we can, once and for all, get this taken care of. Shu is with Elco, and I would like to have the IGA so we can do this. And they did it on a flat rate fee for the whole year.
Where did you see that fee, I haven't seen it yet?
Five thousand dollars, it's in the conversation.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking.
Total cost of the amount, it's $2,000.
Oh, $2,000, sorry. $2,000. I'm sorry, the $5,000 was the grant, not the IGA.
Do we have an hourly rate?
No, it's not.
It's just a flat?
Yeah, they just do it. I do too. And they also provide the same services for the fire station, for the ambulance district, other places here locally. And they have someone who is actually officed here locally.
Sounds like we're making progress. I move that we adopt resolution series 2019, number seven.
Second. Any further discussion, questions? All in favor? Is there a second?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, resolution 2019, number seven is going to be approved. Thank you very much. Number seven session, old business.
That would be on the future, because I gave them right, I wanted to see.
Sure, I want you to do a comparison in an implamation band and get that to us, and I'll be great.
This is just in case you guys want to know.
All right, down for reports. I spoke with, I don't know how to pronounce your last name. Viness, the mayor of Eugene? B-I-N-I-S, Lucy. I spoke to her today on September 12th, Jamie. If you haven't got the invitation, you and I are going to get an invitation to meet with mayors in Lane County to go over the emergency plans and how that'll coordinate what the next steps are and that type of thing. So the venue has yet to be chosen, but we should be able, we should be getting an invitation shortly so that we can plan for that.
Okay, great.
I'd also wanted to jump back, Jamie, a little bit, and talk about our water issue. We hired a water usage lawyer or something?
Yes.
Right? When can we, could you put together meetings so that we could have our peers, that we can all of us ask our questions?
Right now, we're in the process of exchanging data and information so that she can get up to speed.
Excellent.
So I will certainly let Rochelle, let Lauren know that we have her.
And then the other thing, one of my pet peeves for a couple of years now, would you also put some time on the agenda so that we can start talking up here about the, I call them non-vacated roads, but now they're county property?
I have a plan now.
All right, excellent, we'd love to hear that.
Well, I had hoped to bring you an ordinance today, but it didn't get done.
All right, so that's all I have. Community center report. I've been advised we need to take a look at, is it next door, Jamie?
It's just across the street.
Across the street.
He's going to come back when he gets the time to do it. And he's been doing it, it's just he didn't realize how bad it was. And didn't make time to, didn't have time yesterday when he did the other yard.
Both in good shape, gutters are clean, so we're ready for the sunshine.
The tree right here, if, when you go out tonight and you look at it, you can see the whole top half is dead.
Okay. The tree?
The tree.
Yeah.
I have emailed David, who believes it to be on his property. It is not, it's on our property. I didn't want to poke a sleeping dog, so I just asked him to look at it.
You want the tree removed, or are you thinking of getting the dead off of it?
I, I think it needs to, you take a look at it and see what you think, but I think it just needs to come down.
It's our tree, sounds like we're cutting on it.
That's, we've cut on it before, and David, and suffered the wrath of David. So I'm trying to get him involved early on so that we can talk about it and see what the best way to go.
Okay. And on that type of subject, I forget the gentleman that came and took down the tree.
Alderman, or Wes?
Yes, great job. We had a tree on the city property on a vacated road that borders my property and Alderman's property. And it was very large and very dead.
Very heavy.
And when the wind blows, it moves, so we had that thing taken down. Kids came in, I don't think they were there two hours. We didn't, we didn't have them clean it up because it's on unimproved property. I mean, it's my property, but nobody ever goes back there and goes like, let's save some money and just drop it. And they miss the fences, you know. Every time somebody does tree work around here, it just amazes me how they can, you know. I would have three houses gone by the time, and a road somewhere, you know. Water quality report, answer show?
Well, they went out and tested the water in a week. We have the report in the packet. We didn't get out for silksuits, but we hope to do that next week.
Public works. Jamie?
Again, we've been working on the projects, identifying the projects and writing the RFPs for the projects that we hope to get accomplished this year. Parkway is the big one right now, and we now have Richard back in town at least most of the time. So he is beginning to sweep and trim and clean things up. And just remind everybody to, that the right of way is more than the pavement. Unless you live on right road. And that section, that little section that you're headed to, let it somehow got sprung down. I think it got split between two subdivisions, and so, you know, all the other roads are 50-foot wide, but that one's 20.
That's a path. Emergency services, did we beat that up enough?
Uh, probably. There's what we log back at this end here. Yeah, the Lane County Public Health will be holding a training exercise with a plague scenario. That should be interesting.
Plagues, excellent.
Have a great time. Well, they're preparing for the 2020 Olympic trials that are going to be happening. And the 2021 World Sports Day. So they're trying to get their ducks in a row for those things, which is good to know.
And any of your further reports, Jamie?
Let me see if there's any. I cannot believe how slow construction has been this year. Five permits and me. I told, you've discussed the danger tree. We did have a complaint about dogs attacking individuals on Keachley Arm Road. They asked what to do, and I told them to call the sheriff's office. Sheriff's office said, no, call Dune City. So they called back, and, but, you know, it's the same stuff. I just told them, we have nothing. I just told them, "We have nothing. I have no jurisdiction. You have to take matters into your own hands. I don't know what that means, but dog owners on Keachley Arm Road, you want one, make sure they stay home." We did the, oh, yes. Division of Land Conservation developed, conducted the National Flood Incident Plan Audit and Assistance Visit in Dune City. Oh my Lord, there are so many things I'm supposed to be doing and I don't know what I was supposed to be doing. So, yeah, I've got a whole new list of things to do and checklists to prepare and procedures and that sort of thing. I'll be going to Salem this month, next week as a matter of fact, to make the presentation to the Parks and Rec Department on the acquisition of property for Rebecca's Trail. We're still waiting a decision from the Building Codes Division. I spoke with David about it yesterday and he said, "It's got some good stuff in it, but it's not going to be good for us." Or right now, it doesn't look like it's going to be good for us. So if you wanted to make one more phone call to Senator Rowland and to Catty, that may be helpful, I don't know. It may just be too late and we'll just have to deal with whatever comes on the front. And as you may have received an email from me, we have a report that someone's been stealing mail out of mailboxes.
Yes, I did.
In this one instance, the person had ordered a shirt and was waiting for the package to come in. And it didn't come, and didn't come, and didn't come. And they didn't pay any attention that there wasn't any mail either. And then all of a one, all of a sudden, one day, they were contacted by the postmaster in Florence to let them know that someone had opened the box, removed whatever was in the box and took all the mail they didn't want and put it back in the box and dropped it into the mailbox in Florence. So, I mean, outside of Fred Meyer.
A lot of trouble for a shirt.
Yeah, it is a lot of trouble.
If they pay the bills, if they take out of the bank.
Right. I'd be okay with that. So that's all I have.
Good in the order. Not tonight.
I have something to share about our community. Today, I got to watch my five and two-year-old grandkids and I got a phone call. I was talking with both of them, I got a phone call. I was beginning with my phone call, I went back into the room and just one of them was there. I asked my granddaughter where his grandson was, she goes, "I don't know, she was watching cartoons." This whole thing took about 15 minutes. I immediately called my wife and I called, because I couldn't find them. I did a quick look in the house, he was asleep and doors are open, beautiful day. And I called my wife, I called his dad, getting them on the way out there. I didn't want to dally around because the water's down there and all of that stuff. Walked outside, one of my neighbors was outside, he asked me what was going on. I said, "I'm missing a little one." He asked, "How long?" I said, "About three minutes." And he went out, looked and he seen another neighbor. They had found him by then, I hadn't, I went around the other way. Just that quick, they had him corralled probably within five or six minutes of initial time out the door. But if anybody there had been around with a two-year-old, we all know, we got to keep, they're quick. And so that's, that's kind of where the neighborhood was in and I'm just very thankful for that.
I'm probably.
You got to have a joke or something.
Well, yes. If, you need to remember when you're thinking about criticizing someone that you need to walk a mile in their shoes. And the advantage of doing that is that you'll be a mile away and they won't have any shoes.
Thank you.
They won't catch it.
That's right. Rapunzel? Could you give us kind of a brief overview of the triathlon?
Yes. We don't have all of the details in, but as far as I can tell, participant-wise, there were a little over 200 racers that finished the course. I've heard of only one sort of minor injury. There may be a couple of other ones, but I haven't confirmed those. We had 37 volunteers from the public at large to help out on race day, plus 23 CO-C-A-R-C radio members and 15 Boy Scouts and their leaders. So we were very short of volunteers, but Best in the West did a really good job of making sure the run course especially was marked carefully and thoroughly so nobody got lost. And everyone seemed to have a great time.
And we appreciate that you brought it to.
Yeah.
You couldn't have dialed up any better.
No.
Jamie, you got anything else?
I do, but I can't remember what. Oh, I know, this is a ordinance. We have been contacted by an Eagle Scout candidate to do a project. So we're working with them and Susan tells me today there's another one too coming along.
Two? Wow, terrific.
So, yeah.
I just met them tonight out here, so they'll be calling soon.
The media have anything? Really? They're so quiet.
We're hearing them, sir.
Well, yeah, you say that now when your boss is here, but we remember when she wasn't here. All right, well, it's adjourned at 6:55. Thank you all.
You're the editorialists.